Are you bet, Paul?
I'm waiting on neither.
Eleven. Resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. Eleven A, consideration of resolution 2025-01, compliance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Okay. I'm still cold.
So I read it, what do we gotta do?
So, on that one, I have notes. These are ones that we just, these are like our housekeeping things, but on that one, I would like to make a suggestion and see what y'all think. Some of y'all may not agree with me. But, I, I was thinking, so, um, I had talked to a couple of the other counties and things, and when things get on the agenda, I know we get a lot of people that wanna just put stuff on the agenda, and it can be pretty random, or it can be really good stuff, and I, but I think a lot of times, we get inundated with different things, and then people get aggravated whether the county manager did or didn't approve something to go on the agenda or whatever, or somebody wants something on the agenda and it, you know, doesn't make it, or, or whatever. So, I had talked to a couple of other counties, um, three, and the way that they do it is, when something goes on the agenda, in order for it to be on the agenda, it has to have, um, chair approval, but it has to have a commissioner's support. So, a commission, one of us, have to agree to have that on the agenda. One of us have to say, yes, I'll support that item to be on the agenda, in order for it to go, so that it's not something that somebody's gonna come up here and we know that it's not gonna be anything that's gonna work in our part of the woods. And then, anybody, they just goes, it goes through the county manager to get put on the agenda.
I talked to you the other day, a little.
Yes.
So, just because Joe Blow off the street comes in and say, "I want, uh, that water bottle on the agenda," can they put it on? Do you have to put it on?
Legally?
Legally.
No, no.
But we don't have anything in writing, right?
Well, the Open Meetings Act doesn't guarantee public participation in any meeting. It's a privilege that's extended by, by the commission.
Okay.
So, but, but just to comment on your, on your suggestion, Madam Chair, if you did what you suggested, you know, I would suggest you would consider allowing your electeds to put something on the agenda as well.
Oh, yeah.
Or, and/or your, your county manager.
Yes.
I mean, so this is, things that don't come through the county manager or through an elected, need, need a, need a commission approval. I mean, I think that's a better approach.
And that's what, like, I believe it was, um, I don't wanna blurt out the county, but he said, they, what he does is he either does chair approval or, and a commission approval. So, all of the commission has to agree. I mean, one of the commissioners have to want it on, just one, has to want it on the agenda, and it automatically goes.
Just like today, that doesn't, Madam Chair, that doesn't foreclose someone from coming in and saying, having their three minutes.
Right.
It's just if they wanna take up your agenda time on something that takes.
But then, like, he said, he also has it set for chair approval, and I said, "Well, why would you do that?" Because the chair has no more authority than anybody else. And he said, "Because a lot of times, you'll get people that'll come in, and they'll try one commissioner, and if they don't get it, they'll try the next one, and try, until they get one." And if you have it go back to, like, your commission chair, then once somebody tries and you've turned them down, and that person just calls the chair and says, "Hey, I got this request, I said no," then one person knows, so you're not doing a quorum, and we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, that that chair knows. So, when it comes back and somebody says, "Okay, I want this put on the agenda," so the chair knows, okay, that's supposed to be on the agenda. And if it's not on the agenda, or it is gonna be on the agenda, you can say, "Yeah, but you do know that they've already called three other people, and they were turned down, so do you still want that on the agenda?" And then when you find that out, a lot of times, it's different. And he also said that they do that for, um, if a commissioner, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I guess I'm not following. I mean, it seems to me, if somebody wants to approach each one of you to put it on the agenda, that's up to them, and it's up to you to say, "Yes or no."
But he just said, because he'll just, they'll just go down the line and pick a commissioner until they find one that'll wanna do it, or that is just willing to do it.
What she's saying, I think, is, uh, if a commissioner requests an item, he put on, they'll put it on.
Yes.
And that's quite, she said, go down the line.
Yeah, that's why, so, that commissioner goes ahead and requests it to be on there. And then, if, like, say, Paul wants something on the agenda, he's gonna tell Annette, "Okay, I want this on the agenda," but he's gonna tell me, as chair today, "I want that on, I put this on the agenda." And then, I make sure, when that agenda comes out, that the agenda approval, that it has any request, any commissioner made, that it actually made the agenda, so that it's always on the agenda. And then you've got more than one person saying, "I want something on the agenda," and you make sure it's on the agenda, so that it is a full commission agenda. It's not just one person saying, "I want this," or whatever. So, anyway, that's just what I was thinking, but...
So, so if, if somebody from the community calls Annette, says, "I wanna be on the commission."
On the agenda?
On the agenda, yada, yada, yada.
For an action item.
For an action item. Discussion or action. Then Annette will then make the phone calls to you to get it approved, or the person trying to make, to get on the agenda.
However she wants to do it, I mean, she would just, however she wants to do it.
You know.
Yeah. You should could refer 'em to me, or tell 'em they would have to get a, well, what they said they did was they tell the people, "You have to get commissioner approval," and when a commissioner calls me and requests it on the agenda, or the commission chair calls me and requests it on the agenda, that's when it goes on the agenda, until they do it. She doesn't, he doesn't take requests from the public. It has to come from a commissioner. Or an elected official.
And that's kosher with the, with the Open Meetings Act.
It's whatever your procedure is. I mean, I guess, I guess, I don't personally have a problem with somebody coming, asking you to be on the agenda, you say, asking you, you say, finally getting down to the end, and he said, "Yeah, let's put it on." I mean, I think that's...
That's fine.
That's just, that's politics.
Right.
You know, as long as it, as long as it gets the approval of one of you, I, I...
That's why he said it just has to be...
It limits the stuff, you know, because a lot of, a lot of people come to you with stuff that you really can't do anything about, and then the question is whether you wanna take up agenda time to discuss that kinda stuff. That, I guess that's the real reason.
Exactly. Because, like, there might be something that four of us don't like, or, you know, and one of us does, well, they should be able to put it on the agenda, even if nobody else likes it.
Absolutely.
I agree.
And I think if you have the commission, you know, with the, with the oversight over what exactly goes on the agenda, or the manager, or another elected.
What do y'all have to say?
I, I wonder, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I wonder, is there, this is gonna sound bad, and it's not, because I don't want to hear people out, because I do, and I think that's our job, is the electeds to do, but you might get somebody in here that wants to talk and present for three hours as well, you know? Some of these presentations can get very lengthy, and is there a way that we can form it to where they only get so much time, and I'm not talking three minutes if it's an agenda item, but I'm assuming that's at the, at the chair's discretion?
I think that's what you build into your policy, but I think that, I think that's right. I think you can, you know, assess as much time as you think any particular item is, is worthy.
So if they're coming to Fabian, and they say, "Hey, I've got three hours," and he says, "Nope, I'm, I'm only gonna allow you thirty minutes," that...
They get thirty minutes plus three.
That's just my thoughts on it. It just seems like it's a little iffy.
Well, yeah, I mean, to speak to that point, Commissioner Parker, I mean, this is, this is really your meeting, okay? And you're the representatives of the people. That doesn't, that means you represent the people. That doesn't necessarily give them the right to come to your meeting and take up hours and hours and hours of your time.
So can we just go ahead and put it in there in the beginning, that each agenda item will only take, and I'm not using this number, y'all, I'm just throwing a number out, like, no agenda item can take more than fifteen minutes, including discussion, unless prior approval or whatever?
Madam Chair, you can put any number you want to, just know that under parliamentary procedures, you can always extend that. So if you're, you're in the middle of something, and, you know, you, you realize that it's gonna take longer than fifteen minutes, any one of you can make a motion to extend that, that speaker's time by however long you want.
Good, so cut it back to ten minutes. I'm serious, it's easy to give, extend and fine, but it's just hard to retract.
I, I, I hear ya.
Well, that might be the way to go, instead of locking ourselves into something.
I agree with what you're saying, yeah. Because we can always extend it if it's going somewhere, but a lot of times, we get into conversations that it gets repetitive, and it gets to be this, everybody's saying the same thing over and over again, and we get nowhere.
I think, I think it would be a good idea to, uh, to set a time limit, and then extend it if we need to. I think so.
But I definitely wanna have public input. I agree with public input. I like public input, and I think the public has a right to put, you know...
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? And I, I don't think I would put it in your open meetings resolution. I don't think that's the place for it. I think the place for it is in your rules of procedure.
Okay.
So, uh, that's where I would put it, in whatever language you, you wanna put in there, and craft, or procedure you wanna put in there. I think that's the, a better place for it.
Okay.
The Open Meetings Act isn't about how long the meeting takes, it's about how the meeting is published and...
Upper notice.
Yeah, I know. Okay. So, is everything in our Open Meetings Act, do you think, is all copasetic so far, Annette?
Honestly, it's the same. Um, I did highlight, uh, what would be a possible change, which was gonna be the times. That was the only change that I could see, but those are gonna stay, so...
Okay, so everything looks good? So do y'all wanna just leave it as is?
He's looking real quick.
Did you have something you wanted to change? How about you, Fabian?
No.
Is there anything in here, I'm just looking real quickly, is there anything in here about, okay, if commissioners are appearing telephonically, I wanna make sure that that's in this resolution to give you to the authority.
To appear, yeah. So they're pretty good with it, then? Since I just wasted all y'all's time, 'cause it doesn't need to be in this one?
So, do we wanna take action on this, or any kinda, you just wait? Do you wanna put in here ten minutes, or five, or fifteen?
But I can't put it in this one, right?
I would recommend not. I would recommend doing in the next action item that you have on the agenda.
Oh, okay, in the participation one? Okay, so, we just need to approve?
Right.
This Open Meetings Act resolution that we've had for the past?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Yes. Commissioner Chriswell? You like to hear your name, don't ya? Adam, oh...
It's a deal called for.
That's it. Eleven B, consideration of resolution 2025-02, public participation in Roosevelt County Commission meetings. So, that would've been where all of our stuff just went. So, what we all just discussed, that would be this, this one right here. You sure may.
So, businesses that are wanting to come in, like Blackmore Solar Deal, they would still be under the ten-minute rule or fifteen-minute deal?
Yeah, but we can extend them.
And then we can extend them. I just want, like, those people, they need...
I know, but...
Yeah.
They need to our discretion.
Right. So, I just wanna make sure that everybody, you know, like, people that are wanting to have legitimate reason to be a presentation, to have legitimate time to present, instead of being constricted just to fit our needs. I think, I, in, you know, and, uh, but I do, like I say, I do, I do see where we're coming from, but I think, you know, you gotta use our discretion, 'cause I do want, if the legitimate people need legitimate time.
And I think everybody's legitimate on what their own opinion is. I just, I just don't want us to get bogged down. I've seen us get bogged down with just repetition, 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 and it makes it really hard.
Annette, do you have a resolution of what, or do you have it down on the... ...large restrictions?
He's looking at this right...
This document doesn't do it, I mean...
No, we wanna add to that document.
Either add to this, or, or make amendments to your standing rules of procedure, either one.
That's what we wanna do. I wanna amend this document right here. And, how would you word that, Mr. Van Fletch? For commission and chair and all that? Do you guys agree with all of that stuff that I talked about, or is there some part of it you guys didn't agree with? Like, how, when we put something on the agenda, and then, like, the chair approves the agenda, to make sure that everybody's stuff that they wanted is on there too? Because I know, like, Ms. Kirk, she has, she gets inundated with a lot, and then doesn't know whether it should go on, like, action or whatever, and if you tell me, and you tell her, then we'll both know and make sure, and keep up with what needs to go on and what needs to be done, and whoever the chair is at the time.
I think we oughta have some kind of, some way to restrict.
Ten minutes? Is that what y'all wanted?
I've been putting something on our agenda that don't need to be...
Madam Chair, we can, we can try to make that language fit into this document. I, I do think that, really, actually amending your rules of procedure, I know you have a section on your rules of procedure that talks about how agendas are formulated, and if you were, if you incorporate the language you're talking about into that particular section of your rules of procedure, then that's a very clear place for people to go to find out, "Oh, if I wanna be on the agenda, this is what I have to do."
Okay, so we'll make that, and we bring it at the next one.
We postpone this to the next meeting, and we make the appropriate changes to that, to that document.
Okay.
But this document, as it stands, if you wanna adopt it, this is, this is fine, too.
So we don't need to add it in the public participation? Nothing needs to be changed in that?
For this? No, I mean, this is a, this is a fine document. It reiterates, you know, the right to free speech, the right to come before the commission and speak freely for three minutes, the right not to be interrupted during that time unless it's, you know, egregious conduct, you know, things of that nature. There's nothing wrong with this document at all.
Okay. Second. Got a motion and a second. Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Consideration of resolution 2025-03, delegation of authority to the county manager for dispersment of vendor checks. We know what that is. So, Ms. Kirk, you might wanna explain that one to the new commissioners, so that they understand.
Just like it says, this is, uh...
Pay bills or...
Yes.
Yep.
So she doesn't have to get our approval before she writes a check for every vendor? She can approve the vendor checks?
Yes.
Y'all agree with that?
I move we approve.
I'll put a second. Got a motion, a second.
Yes.
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 D, consideration of resolution 2025-04, delegation of authority to the county manager during certain contracts and settlement agreements.
So, as I bring this to you as well, I did highlight a couple of items in there. Um, I didn't know if y'all wanted to change those amounts. We have discussed those in the past. Um, I will, of course, and it states that all contracts will be brought to y'all, including anything that will be renewed.
Okay.
So, I didn't...
Is there a limit on any of the stuff that you could approve, or agreement, or contracts that you enter into?
Well, and just like the first one, it says, renew anything less than sixty thousand. But of course, anything, just like the one I'm bringing to you now, even though it's less than sixty thousand, I'm bringing, I, I would not, I would bring that to you, regardless, 'cause that's a new contract. That'll be something new hitting the budget.
Do you think there's any reason, do you feel like you need to be able to renew contracts of less than sixty thousand? Is that something you would wanna do?
I just wanna make sure y'all are completely comfortable with that entire situation, regardless, so...
What do you two think? Y'all are newbies.
Madam Chair, I, personally, I'm not comfortable with the amount. It's nothing to do with our county manager whatsoever, but I think that, and I'm not exactly sure what y'all think is the right amount, maybe y'all are okay with that, but I think anything with that large of a number needs to come through the commission prior to. And also, Mr. Van Fletch, this might be a, a question for you. I don't know if it should be in this resolution, also that these projects can't be done in phases either. So if we lower it to forty thousand dollars, you can't do a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project in three phases, if that makes sense.
I think that's part of that. That's included, Commissioner Parker, as part of the procurement regulations.
Okay.
You can't arbitrarily break up a larger project into those smaller pieces to make it fit under a small purchase...
Right.
...threshold, for example. So, I mean, that protection's already in there, uh, to some extent.
And I don't like item two at all.
I, I agree. I mean, if I have to, I would prefer at least somebody else sit in on that.
I think any amount on item two, that's my, my thought.
Yeah, that's what I said. I don't, I don't agree with item two at all. I just, like, wipe that out.
I think zero. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Miss Manager, where would you, what, where would you feel comfortable on handling, you know, bigger, on handling the contracts?
The renewal.
And still keeping the transparency? What, where, I wanna hear where, where you think your comfortable zone is.
Right now, I still feel, even though, if, if it's being renewed, it should be in the budget. However, at the same time, I don't have any problem bringing, I would prefer that every contract be brought before the commission. And as a matter of fact, I have another one that'll be brought for your approval, which is a very minute amount. It's just something that we do, but I want y'all to see that that is the contract that we are entering into, regardless of the fact that it's not any more than just a couple of thousand dollars. But you need to see that it is a contract that the county is having to enter into, uh, in order for us to, uh, do certain things, so...
And where are you, sorry?
So, twenty-five thousand? You know, where, where would you feel comfortable, you know, and not trying to step on toes? At all?
No, no, and I, I don't take that at all. I, I really feel like, um, again, the way this one reads, so we'll need, I mean, renew contracts for less than, you know?
Well...
What would, I mean, what would the commission honestly feel okay with me signing off on in an amount that you would feel would not jeopardize the budget?
What you said a minute ago about, you like bringing all of them to the commission, whether they're renewal or not, where I think a lot of that is good, is that every two years there's a possibility of new commissioners on here, they don't know we have those contracts. So when they do come before the commission, it lets everybody know what's there and refreshes, because some of those contracts that you're renewing may be ten years old or fifteen years old, and we don't even know we have those.
Or, or what's the real purpose?
Exactly. So I like them coming back before the commission.
I do, you know, I'm all good for twenty-five thousand, you know?
It was originally...
And that would keep everybody, you know, that way, it would involve all of us.
It's only ten thousand now.
No, that's for litigation.
Yeah, I, I don't, oh, sorry.
I wanna go zero for that one.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You know, but that, that's just my, as a matter of fact, to get things going, I'd like to make the motion to lower that, lower the, the new contract amount to twenty-five thousand, and lower the authority for litigation settlements to zero.
Okay, that's not, not to correct you, but that's not new contracts, that's the authority to renew.
To renew contract, instead of renew.
Okay, so you don't want her to bring them to the commission anymore? The renewed ones? You want her to just be able to do it on her own, right?
No, to renew, I want that, I wanna lower the amounts.
Okay.
Well, I said it wrong, I, I said new instead of renew. Any new contract, any renew, renewals or renewals, bring the amount down to twenty-five thousand and lower the litigation settlements to zero.
The original purpose was to allow the county manager at the time to renew subscriptions, like the Albuquerque Journal, and the things like, um, Indeed, where we post our job ads and that kinda thing, that were low dollar amount. And over time, it's just grown, and it does need to go back down.
Like I said, but I made that motion, so...
Okay. And with that, I would also like to add that, um, I would, I would just like to see, like, what you said a minute ago, instead of even having an amount there, I would like to see that whole thing gone, and I would just like to see them all come back before the commission myself, like we talked about, so that when there's renewals, but then, like you said, when it comes to, like, Albuquerque Journal, I don't need those.
Right.
So, I understand that, and, so, okay. Anyway, we have a motion on the table for...
Can you repeat your motion, Commissioner Chriswell?
To leave it as...
I would like to leave the wording as, I'd just like to make the motion to lower the dollar amount from sixty thousand to twenty-five thousand, and ten thousand on litigation to zero. So that just needs to be amended out, number two.
Number two just taken out, yeah.
Now, that's for, that's for renewals. All new contracts...
New and renew, I think new, new and renewals.
Okay, 'cause then we'll be changing that, item three as well, adding a twenty-five thousand dollar threshold into item three as well, according to what I understand you're saying.
No, no, all new contracts need to be brought to the commission, I feel like.
'Cause what you said was all new...
It was up to sixty thousand, just while it...
But that was only for renewed. New contracts all have to come before the commission, there's no amount on new contracts. See right here? There's no...
Not the new, I just wanna change the dollar amount from twenty, from sixty to twenty-five thousand, and ten thousand to zero.
I understand that.
That's all I wanna do.
But you said new and renewed.
I wanna make the motion to change the dollar amount from sixty thousand to zero thousand, I mean, to zero. That's what I want.
But you said new and renewed.
I've said it all.
But you have to clarify.
And I just did.
The way I have the motion. Is Commissioner Chriswell would like to lower the amount of renewals to twenty-five thousand, and lower the amount for litigation to zero, and all new comes to the commission already.
Okay.
So, anything over twenty-five thousand, right? It needs to come back to the commission, right?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Lord help me for saying this royally, don't, shouldn't we just amend that second line out?
Yes.
Would you please amend your motion?
To remove item two.
I make the motion to amend the motion to remove, to strike out, number two.
Andy, would you read that motion back to us now, as it sits?
You'll just be on notice now that all legal settlements...
Go to the commission.
Everybody's on notice, that that's gonna be the way it's gonna be.
So to lower the amount for renewals, annual renewals, to twenty-five thousand, and to not allow the county manager to enter into legal settlements?
Second.
Of any amount.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
That's a struggle.
I like that one.
Same for everybody's awake. Discussion and consideration of resolution 2025-05, establishing a free schedule for public use of the Roosevelt County Fairground facilities. a free schedule for public use of the Roosevelt County Fairground facilities. So.
Fee schedule, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're not doing free.
Free.
Fee, sorry, my bad.
Um, I have created this. I am definitely open to any discussion. I've tried to break it out, I could not find an old fee, a, a resolution regarding the fairgrounds whatsoever. Uh, so I did borrow one from Socorro, uh, just for details. Um, I do have it highlighted that I didn't know if you want to list in there whether or not they could um, stay a set number of nights, only list it for so many consecutive nights, so that way we don't have people staying longer than we should allow or not.
So we don't become a campground?
Yeah.
Um, what I also put in there, I, I did add the, uh, I did say full hookups, but for a full, it's going to just entail water and electricity. Those are set up for thirty or fifty amp already, and uh, the, the fee I'm asking to charge on that is twenty-five. Everything else is already set according to the contract that we have in place. However, after what was maybe stated, um, maybe later on we discuss, or we can discuss now if you want to charge more for the special events arena or either one of the arenas.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the fair, it's a six-day deal, right, for the Roosevelt County Fair?
Tuesday, six.
But, but I guess, but if you include the horse show, that's prior to where the fair starts, and the rabbit show, that'd be over a week, so.
You're, but you're talking kind of different things, what we're, I mean, we can make it more, um, we can add details into that, if that's what you choose to add, I mean, we can.
I'm just going about, you said something about you, you don't want to limit them, you limit them to seven days.
Seven consecutive nights from the date of arrival.
Right, and I'm talking, I think the rabbit show is like on a Friday, and I think the horse show is on a Saturday, and then there's a skip day of Sunday for the fair, and then they come in Monday, and they go out again, and then they go out again on Sunday. So it's longer than that, and so I was just, I was just asking, I just wanted clarification, whatever, you know?
Uh, like I said, it's open for discussion, we don't even actually have to have that in there, it was just more of, I thought it was definitely insightful. So if you want to change the days, if you want to remove it, if you, it's.
And the carnival sometimes stays till Tuesday, because they don't need to be at their next spot.
Right, so, you know, I just, I'm just trying to make it a common, accommodation for all, for everyone, is what I was asking the question.
Can we not put in there, except for if they have the entire fairgrounds in it? If they have the entire fairgrounds rented, then they can have their, they can do anything they want, think, put their hookups there if they want to, if they have the entire fairgrounds rented, because that includes those hookups, doesn't it?
Yes.
So if they have the fairgrounds rented, I don't care if they rent it for a month, they can park there for the month, they have the whole thing rented, right?
As long as they pay for it.
Hundred dollars a day.
That's right.
And in conjunction with an event, I think needs to be in there, because you don't want to just have transient passersby staying at the fairgrounds.
In conjunction with an event, yes. I agree.
You said the rates are current from what we're charging now? I mean, they like, they like our fees already, she said everybody's eyeballing us for our fees and our, our facilities. Do we have any kind of comparison for like arenas and facilities?
Again, I think it's too early, I say leave them until we get to a little further down the road, decide what we've got going on, see what we can do with the equipment. I mean, today, we were just offered a, a big plow, but I mean, we've still got a few hurdles to overcome. So I think we overcome those hurdles and then we address it again. I mean, if it, it gives them the ability to afford it and use it where it's at.
I guess I'm just concerned about this project stalling and not gaining any ground.
Now, keep in mind, I already have people that have already put in. So once we do it, we're going to have to do effective as of.
Or honor the contracts that are in place.
You just honor the contract.
Yeah, you honor the contracts, yeah.
I know, uh, but I'm sure there's lots of others already, we've got the fairgrounds, I mean, the, that's another thing to consider too, when y'all get ready to address any of this stuff, is.
The fair?
In the future.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Lang, how do you feel about your seventy-five dollar a day deal for your, for your building out there at Arch?
Oh, that was something that previous administration done, or manager done, because he just followed what the fairgrounds do. We don't rent it out enough, it don't affect us to.
You're not, you don't have any concerns over it? I just wanted to ask.
One of them deals, I don't think we should have charged for the community for it, but I know we have to, so.
Why? Why do we have to?
Because it's government funded.
Anti-donation clause, so.
So we could lower that fee though, right?
Not below your cost.
Below our, our cost.
You cannot lower it below your actual cost, whatever, whatever his actual cost.
Electrical cost for that, that's what you're talking.
Water and electric is all that building's costing, right?
Yeah, electric, because we're on well, so.
So you don't run seventy?
See, and I feel like if it's a community out there at Arch, I feel like I'll lower that deal, twenty-dollar, twenty-dollar fee.
Was trying to keep it open for the community, otherwise they were going to board it up and it was done.
Just do a fifteen or twenty-dollar deal and, and go on for the community and.
Like Mr. Van Fleck said, have Annette figure out whatever it costs us monthly and lower it to that.
You got the pro-rata cost of the electricity, the, the natural gas, if you have it out there, the propane, the uh, cleaning, uh, sanitize, sanitizing, disinfecting of the building, whatever, whatever has to be done before you give it to somebody and after they leave, those are costs that we have to absorb, that we need to pass on.
Okay.
I'd like to get as low as we could.
I would too, for the communities, you know, and millions and being included with this down there.
I would like to see, get those numbers to add to this and get some comparisons from other places to add and to see where we're at on these, because twenty-five dollars for horse stalls does seem kind of cheap.
Yeah, especially at Vegas, they're charging two hundred a night at Vegas.
I don't think we're Vegas, baby.
Buddy, no.
But I think we can be something pretty substantial.
Oh, I do.
Uh, it, it, I don't want to process out of a deal, it's, you know, we can get started and go prepare, but.
And I want to make sure we get our arenas in shape before we start charging them all this money to use something that is still not.
And I, and I'm all about, okay, and another question I had in that, when they rent out this deal, they have to provide insurance, right? What is the amount of that insurance? Is it, do they get it, or do the, or do they go through the county getting it? Or do they provide their own insurance?
They can provide their own insurance, of course, and Mandy can probably, since she's dealt with all of this before, but they provide their own insurance, or there's a, on the contract, there's a place where we give them access to get that insurance.
But it's one million dollars.
It's a tulip policy that is a basic million dollars, which is going to cover anything like somebody running a car or a tractor into a barn, a barn door, yeah.
Rope and shoot.
This doesn't have to be acted on today, does it?
No, no, and rough stock is a lot more expensive.
You want it acted on today, or?
The only thing I have is I have people, um, again, I do have the jog agility people that are, been requesting, they've got something coming up in February. Um, I can try to have those amounts ready for you in February and tell them again.
You can just, can you just have them the next meeting? And then we'll have it done before February, before they do it?
Our next meeting's February.
Oh, we don't have another one, is one?
Because we've got the legislative conference.
Well, I guess you're right.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve this today and is, if possible, revisit it in February again.
Good idea. We got a motion and a second, Commissioner Greider.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, discussion and consideration of ordinance twenty-two-one dash oh one relating to the promotion of ethical conduct of public officials within Roosevelt County and addressing interference by county commissioners and other elected officials. Commissioner Parker?
Back to the ethics ordinance. I'm not opposed to having an ethics ordinance, uh, I think the state already covers the ethics ordinance through the state board. I feel like our current ethics ordinance, uh, it's written in a way that I believe discourages communication between employees and commissioners, and I'm not saying that we should not have a chain of command, because I believe that we should have a chain of command, and that goes all the way up to Annette, but, and nothing against our county manager whatsoever, if the problem becomes with the county manager, then I feel like we need to be able to look at it as well. I feel like we're the representatives that are elected to this position. I don't feel like our current ethics ordinance is enforceable. Well, it's just unenforceable, uh, it lists in the ethics ordinance, elected officials as well. That's what the state board, I feel like, is for, um. Yeah, I had it up over here as well.
I don't know how you see that.
You know, I think the way this one's written, again, it, it goes back to making it where we're only hearing from the county manager what's going on within the county, because everybody else in the county would be afraid to talk to them. I completely, um, believe in going to each department head, checking in once in a while. I'm not saying that I want to step on anybody's toes and call one and tell him what he's doing, that's your job, not mine. But I still want to check in, stop in and talk to the employees, hey, how's things going, how do you like what's happening here? And I don't think that this ordinance, the way it's written, allows for that communication. So I'm not going to beat this up, I make a motion to abolish the ethics ordinance as it's currently written.
Madam Chair, in order to amend an ordinance, you need to have fifteen days prior notice. I mean, so I, if this is simply noticed as a, as a normal agenda item, I would say your motion today is in order, but because it's an actual ordinance change, it requires publication and notice that that change is potentially going to happen fifteen days prior. So you, you could certainly make that motion to have this on the next agenda item, and it can certainly, uh, next agenda, and it can certainly be up for an action item at that point in time, sir.
Thank you, I'll amend my motion to posting this as Mr. Van Fleck stated, and revisiting it the next commission meeting.
Randall, isn't that the same thing when you want to enforce an ordinance? You have to give a two-week or?
Notice of intent.
I think to it.
Well, the, 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 the state statute says you have to give fifteen days prior notice of final adoption. So, I mean, you can do that, a lot of people do that in two stages, they do, they, they make a motion to, uh, they, they, they come to the commission and ask permission to publish, and then they publish, and then two weeks later, they, uh, adopt the, the ordinance change. I mean, so that takes two meetings to do that, you can really do it in one meeting, like, like you're doing today. You know, I mean, you could make a motion, I want to make, I want on the agenda, an ordinance change for the next meeting. And so then it just goes to the next meeting, and that's when your, your change happens. But yeah, you, you do have to give fifteen days prior notice. Well, it says two weeks is what it, I'm going to, I'm going to check the language, it's in the, it's, it's in the municipal code ironically.
Commissioner Parker, is your motion to publish notice of intent to abolish ordinance twenty-two-one oh one?
Yes.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Got a motion, a second, Commissioner Greider?
No. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. Item number twelve. Contracts, agreements, and procurements. Request for approval of FY twenty-five EMS Fund Act application for Arch Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Frank, nice to see you up and about.
Good morning, thank you. Uh, what I'm doing is putting together the EMS Fund Act for Arch and the service report, and it's due on December, uh, January seventeenth at five P M. Um, I'll be putting in for more equipment, the funding request as it did last year. Um, through the legislature, they're going to try to get us more money again this year. So while you're talking to legislatures, that would be a good thing to support. So, uh, right, at this point, uh, it just requires a signature on page, and then as I go along, other items will open up to where I can fill those items out, so.
I move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was easy, wasn't it?
Absolutely.
Long wait.
Consideration, request for approval of the contract with Take E M L L C for professional services, Ms. Kirk.
Again, this is, uh, just regarding the contract with Take A M uh, for the services, uh, as CFO, until we fill that position, and then they fulfill the duties of training as well, and help us get through the rest of our fiscal. Uh, this contract is under sixty thousand, hopefully we will not be utilizing that much on it. I have verified in the budget that we do have the funding to do this. It will.
Approve, second.
Got a motion, a second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Chriswell? Oh, my gosh. Item twelve C, request for approval of the forty-eight month contract with Time Clock Plus for the annual license and services.
I'm, I'm going to let, um, Gemma discuss that. So the contract does have to be signed by Annette, but it falls into the H R kind of field of it. So T C P is Time Clock Plus, which is what we use for our time clock and record keeping for our hourly employees. The contract, we technically have two, um, and one of them is for forty-eight months on, uh, it's our renewal, essentially forty-eight months for twelve hundred and fourteen dollars essentially. And then our second one, and that's for hardware support and maintenance. And then the second one goes into the same forty-eight months contract entering into for the professional license annual charge. So it's forty-five eighty-seven per unit, and we have sixty units that we use, so that's sixty personnel that fall into that record keeping contract. And we tend to vary between that, um, normally falling below, sometimes meeting right at that sixty. So that's a number that I feel comfortable keeping, as well as, um, the, uh, overage professional license annual, um, charge, and that's just in case we oversee that sixty, um, amount, just to keep that balance, we have that extra to fall back on too. We have, um, exceeded the sixty in the time here, as we have people coming and going, and so they're not being removed as we were without H R for a few months, so it was more of the system of cleaning it up before we had that covered. So I just request approval to have this contract signed and renewed.
I'll move to approve item twelve C.
A second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What's the reason behind the forty-eight months?
Um, cost, cost. So it locks us in for that annual rate for forty-eight months, and it's comparable to what we've had in the past. It's increased slightly, but everything's increased slightly as the times change. So it's only gone up a few hundred dollars, I believe, from what our last contract was. So it's only gone up a few hundred dollars, I believe, from what our last contract was. Um, and so it's just forty-eight months lock us into that annual rate.
Okay.
Any more discussion? We got a motion, a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Do we have any media present? Nada? Okay.
No emails.
I will then make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one NMSA nineteen seventy-eight H two, attorney-client privileged information pertaining to threatened or pending litigation and/or limited personnel matters pertaining to the county manager as needed. Any further action necessary as a result of closed executive session. Got a motion and a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. We will now go into executive session.
Was that leave before, can I leave now?
This time.